But it should. Should pop up because this could be running. Yep. It's still in about fifteen seconds. So it's just but.
If you're on there, Andy, you're muted.
And if you're there, I can't hear you guys at all. And I'm not muted.
Girl, what you doing? I love that shirt. That's.
Well, you saw me with my sardines.
I know, but I love that one. It was great. Where did you get that?
Yes, I can hear you now.
You know what their ultimate goal is, right? Their ultimate goal is to undersell every company that they can. And truly dominate the everything. I can't support that. They better, you know what I mean? I see it in a picture, though. It's mine.
So if you're gonna take me up on your offer, how do I get them to come up on the screen?
All right, most of the budget's gonna be up there too, Chuck, isn't it?
Oh, no, no, that might have to ask. I'm not sure.
Will we have time, Chuck? You're doing a work session and then executive session?
Yes, I think.
Will we have time if the citizen comes in to talk to you about where they might be at the work session? I got a request today from a citizen to know what was going on. And I was just like, I don't know if they're showing up today, but I've heard that otherwise I can tell them, hey, you don't have any time. Should I ask them what they were like chatting about or?
Well.
Are they asking what's going on at our work session?
Well, they just go time is meeting in the works, like what time is work session in the meeting. And I didn't know if they were coming to talk or listen or.
Bro, where's this day go?
Who's been watching the Hoover lap? Oh, God. Have you been watching on these?
Well, I just said, I just was very open and said that I wasn't the councilor from that one. I reported the Argo. And then I became anti-business immediately. I was like, um. Not the same thing, girl. And they were like, they kept saying that Viking is a business. I said, really? Where's their, let's see, the business question set? Cause I make everybody else some tax debt, what? I wanna see their tax dollars. I'm all for it.
How about like seven and she was.
Right on, we scheduled the budget once.
The whole thing.
To go for the.
All right, let me see the thingies.
Sure.
Before, uh, I get us all.
Yeah, it might also give us an idea of how much.
Well, no, that was. Well, it's more.
I gotta be doing some work stuff.
Okay, let me see, um.
And I.
In days. But this is actually a good time to do it.
Have a little. You know, through my attorney shit, I mean, to the. Every step.
See, like, it did something like when you turn it on, it's not communicating what it's doing.
I thought tenants had a certain amount of time. You know. You do and stuff. It was. I mean, commercials, a little different stuff, but it's.
Yeah, yeah. How are you doing?
Man, I'm good. I just, dude, I just. Hot food, orange fruit.
I feel like it's something with.
You just got in town?
In my big truck, twenty minutes ago.
You drove all the way from Kansas City in that big truck?
To make this council meeting.
To make this meeting.
And then you go back.
No, thank God.
I've done that drive a few times specifically from Kansas City.
About fourteen hours.
Dude, it's. And you're slapping yourself in the face to stay awake, you know?
Kansas.
No.
And two big trucks hit each other between like Hayes and Moley or something. Last night I sat eight hours.
Oh, no.
Kansas isn't incredible. How hot it is down there? After they put up all those fans.
Yeah.
Good thing.
And I'll tell you this, two councilors down there are, so I'm looking like at three o'clock in the morning. And I'm all, what are those heights?
I'm pretty sure it's just start the video.
And there's just.
No, I know. I got feeling it's having a problem a week or something.
I mean. But they're like different heights off the ground. And they're.
And the voice is coming through there.
The good news is we can hear you. We're trying to get to.
Under image over there. From that horizon, driving west, from like the south to the north, as far as you can see, you know? It can't be a lane strip, it's a strip or something.
About fifteen miles.
Well, and they're, if it was lane strip, they'd all be seeing the ground level, right? These things you can tell they're like. Dude, there are those green hills. Oh, every single one, right?
Oh.
Well.
Did you send the packet out?
The council.
Oh, I sent that.
Right? In every single, at all, these green hills, in every single county. That are surrounded by this vast land of, of wind farms. The way they're. Are completely going ballistic nuts about those lands. And how it bothers them too, right? And all this other stuff. Well, here's a plane's gonna run into them.
All right, you can hear us, right?
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
Okay, we don't have your image up on the screen. I'm sorry, but we can hear you loud and clear, so mayor. Oh, there, what good timing. Dylan just walked in.
Dylan was.
Now look at that. It just went up when he walked under there. Trying to get the image up on the screen.
So he is up there with Paul, but his camera not here.
Know what Paul was saying. The state has a residential notification, uh, much stronger, but commercial.
Cause look, both of them are down.
That's a different animal in a lot.
Is there something about the, the team?
I, I comply with the new residential restrictions though, because of my, you know, if I have to do an eviction or. Or, or even if I just wanna send in the lease.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm still here.
Oh, see, but he doesn't, a lot of time when somebody's speaking.
You know, somebody, somebody getting a notice, I will do such a short title. That irritates me. It's no way.
Yes.
Uh, resident, renter, we see we should have.
Okay.
A good ninety days to get their stuff.
So, so it's, this video is showing up here. It's just not transparent.
Right, and especially if they've been there for a long time.
Exactly. Do try to move. That's, that's what was so bad. Jimmy's business is not very conducive to moving, you know? And it is in there, like you said, for somebody yanking.
They're taping the winners.
What is that?
That's the best.
Adam Rose, Adam Rose is the guy I followed. He's so funny.
He doesn't have a daddy.
So it's just his and still showing the video.
Something with his video settings maybe?
Take eleven hours?
We can see him here.
Okay. Yeah, I would be respectful for Jimmy, but, but.
Hi, Chief.
All right.
Hi.
So they can see you on my laptop. They, we're improvising here. We can hear you. As soon as mayor's ready, we'll get started here.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience. We're ready. All right. Well, I wanna thank everybody to the October seventh, twenty twenty four. See, Idaho Springs work session, uh, where we have specifically met to discuss our, uh, budgets, uh, with various departments. Uh, we will adjourn this at seven, uh, to go into it. I'm sorry, at eight to go into an executive session. Uh, so I appreciate everybody's patience. And looks like Dylan has brought us a treat of some pizzas. So, very good. Um, we are gonna kick it off, I think, with Chief. And, uh, really appreciate you putting this together. Very informative. Um. Where's? Oh, oh, we're sorry. Sorry, I, I didn't, Chief, I didn't know you were, you went up on the big screen.
How tall? Where's he at?
But, uh, but we see you there on the smaller screen. Welcome.
Okay, well, uh, thanks, Mayor, uh, Council. I, uh, first apologize that I wasn't able to make it. I'm in Nevada. I had this, uh, trip scheduled for, uh, for a bit. And, uh, so I appreciate you, uh, letting me do this via Zoom. Um, I did put together the memo to truly, really, the, the, the point of emphasis was that was of that was to really reiterate that I think the city's done a great job of supporting, I, I know for us as a police, police department, supporting us, supporting some of the direction that I've, I've wanted to go with, with the department as far as training. But I really wanna make sure that hopefully through these, this budget discussion, I really wanted to reiterate that hopefully we can keep our people in a, at a competitive salary with, uh, based on the, the, the pay study that was done at the end of, I believe, last year. So that was really the, the, the initial part of, of the memo. You know, I, I'm so grateful and humbled that, that the mayor and council, you know, approved a, a, a salary bump for, for myself and, uh, and for Andy and those, in those, those higher level positions. And so I just, I hope that we can kind of keep, keep that momentum going for the other employees because the thing is, we put in so much as far as training these, our, our folks and, uh, and when you lose them, it, it, you, you feel like you, you're two steps forward and maybe four steps back because losing these folks is, is, um, it's, it, it can become a little disheartening. And so, uh, so yeah, I really wanted to emphasize that. I mean, I will share that our, one of our most senior officers had applied for another agency and fortunately, um, decided to, to, to stay with Idaho Springs. So, um, I was very grateful. Officer Baylor had actually applied at the sheriff's department for a detective position. So I was glad that he, he ended up staying with us. So, so with that, um, I won't say anymore about that other than just to, to know that is the, is the budget goes along. That's the most important thing for, for me and I think for our agency because all of these other things that are on this memo and this list are, um, you know, less of a priority. The number one thing on that list that is a priority though, and, and that, that I did try to lay out there are radios. Our radios are no longer serviceable. And what that means is that Motorola, when they come out with a generation of radio, they usually give it five to six years of time. And then where they'll, they'll service those radios. But then after that time ends, if we call to try to get these radios fixed, if we had one that, that malfunctioned or broke, uh, they would say, well, we don't, we don't support that radio anymore. Meaning we don't make the parts. We don't, we, there's nothing you can do with it. So right now we're in okay, we're in good shape because all of our radios are functioning. And if we were to look at replacing either a third or a half of our radios with this budget cycle, uh, that would actually give us, uh, let's just say we replace four radios and that would be about a third. Because what we like to do is we like to have enough radios for everybody. And then typically we have a spare radio. But, uh, so if we were to replace four, that means four of the current radios that we have right now can go sit on a shelf and they're still, they still work. So if something were to happen, we would have, we would be developing our, our own set of spares that would still work. One of the things that I explained to the mayor and Andy when I initially talked about the radios and the costs, we're actually looking to go away from what's called a dual band radio to just digital, meaning it's a little bit less expensive, but we're also, I, what I found in my time here at ISPD for the last three and a half years is that we very, very rarely, uh, and with our radios ever use the VHF channels, which is the other band that, that it tends to be used by the fire authority and fire agencies when they're dealing with wildland fire. And so I did convey that information to the sheriff's department and, and, uh, they were in agreement as well. Uh, they're trying to save some money. And so they're looking at going to just digital radios and it saves us about thousand to fifteen hundred dollars per radio. So, uh, that's, you know, that's significant when you're asked, when you're, you're looking at ten or eleven radios. So, uh, so that's something that, that, that is the highest priority because obviously being able to communicate is critical. It's critical to, as to what we do. And I think I just don't want us to get behind on, on the radios. You know, i- if we were in some sort of budgetary crisis, we could probably wait. But I also don't wanna wait and get to a point where now we have to, um, to really play catch up and, and replacing these radios. So they're at their end of life and, uh, it's one of the things that sometimes in emergency services we deal with, with Motorola. And sometimes those frustrations, uh, as far as cost, cause they are, they're not cheap. Uh, I believe these radios are uh, around forty-five hundred dollars a radio instead of the six thousand dollars a radio for the dual band. So that's, that's what, that's, that's really item number one. And that is the most important item. Then, should I pause? Is there a question?
Yeah, Chief, I just had a quick question. So that's the eight hundred megahertz that are that, that you guys are on currently or?
Correct.
So there, there's something else available or no?
Uh, yeah, they, they have, basically it's the radio itself. It's like the, uh, the, uh, I don't have the, my notes with me, but instead of the Motorola six. I don't have the my notes with me, but instead of the Motorola six thousand, it's like the Motorola s- seven or eight thousand. And so it's just, it's 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 just a a radio that, again, that if something were to happen, you can send it to back to Motorola and they'll fix the radio. Whereas the current radios we have now, they'll they'll just tell us, don't bother sending it to us. It's basically basically becomes, uh, um, an expensive six-year-old, uh, you know, piece of plastic.
Right. I was just making sure it was on the same megahertz level.
Yes. Yes, that none of that has changed. It's just the, it's just kind of like having a lap- a laptop that that is six, seven years old. It just, they start to, they can start to fail. So I I don't want us to get too far behind.
Sorry, you're, uh, keep going, I guess.
Oh, no, 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 no. You you you're not interrupting at all. I mean, I, it's hard when I have to do it on Zoom like this. I prefer to actually be sitting there and 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 looking at you guys face to face. But, uh, the second item actually came up in our just our analysis with Lorraine when she, uh, came in and looked at the city and how we have our jobs and our infrastructure or our employees and what they do. Um, she sat down with both Danielle and Paige a- at the PD as civilian employees and, uh, and obviously Kelsey. And and one of the things that was recommended that the city consider is moving, modernizing not only the citations, which would be electronic citations, which I've talked to council about before. I don't, there's there's newer council members on here. We talked about this, but this was a couple of years ago. You actually had approved this. But I ended up holding off on this because of the Jeffcom transition. I was concerned about the records management system if we went to Jeffcom and I, there were some big unknowns. So I didn't want to move forward at that point because because I was concerned about how that might impact our records management system. So it it ended up not. We 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 still have the same system. But where I'm going with this is that when we do court, all of our information, there's a lot of duplicative efforts and data entry that happens. So a ticket gets written by hand. And then one of our employees, the PD, enters all the information into our records management system. Then Kelsey has to enter uh, the same information into Casell so that if somebody comes and pays their fine, their information is also in Casell. And so and then the o- officers are obviously handwriting everything, which can also be problematic. But the an e-citation system allows us to scan the driver's license. So you use a scanner, you scan the back of a driver's license. And then that information fills onto an electric ticket, electronic ticket. And then the officer still prints out a ticket within their car. So there's a little bit of hardware cost uh, and hands that citation to the the driver. And but all that information is digitally put into our records management system and then also put into a court management system that also has a bridge into Casell. So that sounds like a lot. It sounds like a lot, but it also creates a lot of efficiencies. So it it's, there's a larger upfront front cost to implement that. But, uh, down the road, I I guess where I would go with that is, are you saving a lot of hours and staff time with data entry? And then also the accuracy of the information. So more modern police agencies and cities use this type of technology. One of the things that's surprising to me is that the Colorado State Patrol does not use this. And they don't use a an electronic, uh, ticketing system, which is really surprising. But I think there's a number of things that they have to overcome when it comes to connectivity and being in different courts in the state. Uh, because you still have to go through each county court. So that's probably why it's challenging for CSP. Uh, for us, our tickets would just really go to municipal court. Anything that's written into the county system, we would likely still have to do it the same exact way that we're doing it now. Uh, unless we got the county on board eventually to 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 participate. So that's kind of an overview of an e-citations, electronic court system. So I'll pause if there's any questions about that.
I do have one, Chief. How many tickets do we write that go into the county system?
Uh, that's a really good question. I don't have an, I I cannot give you a definitive answer. I would estimate, so I'll give you an S. I would estimate probably twenty percent. And the reason being, there are certain offenses that you write that require us to go into the county court side of the house. I know that like a registration violation does. So if people don't get their updated tags, but typically, you know, I like I would say, I estimating eighty percent. Those would be things like speeding, stop signs, you know, careless driving. You know, if somebody's involved in a crash, if there's not in serious injury or something, um, it would, so it's your your standard everyday run-of-the-mill traffic offense, they they would all go into the city court.
Thank you.
Sure.
May I ask one more question before we go on to the next wish list? When you're looking at increases, are you looking at, uh, your officers, your uniformed officers? Are you looking at your civilians? Are you looking at your entire department?
Yes, the answer is yes, the entire department. In fact, ju- just just thinking about, uh, losing either Danielle, Zach, Paige, it it would keep keep me up at night. And not that I don't want to lose officers, but I mean, they play such a critical role in the everyday operation of processing paperwork, getting information to the courts, answering public records requests, answering the phones, answering questions for people. I mean, i- it is such a critical, critical role. And now that we're we ventured into social media and we're on Facebook and we're, so we're, I'm really challenging Danielle and Paige both to, uh, Danielle's really taken a big, big role in that. And, uh, so it's it's for everybody, really. In fact, I would, I, you know, it's probably an overshare on my part, but Danielle works a second job. She basically works on Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, and I worry about that. So she she, you know, she works at Starbucks just to make extra, extra money. So I just.
To do the overshare, actually, because I'm, I was very concerned about your civilian ladies that work in the office. I don't, I would, I would like, I know they haven't gotten a raise in a while. I would like to see them get one.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I I totally agree. And I, I mean, me working side by side with them all the time in the office, I know how much they do. And I definitely, as we all know, too, it's there, people are not easily, they're not, they're just not easily replaceable. And fr- frankly, with our, it's our profession and my, our profession in in law enforcement, these people ha- they're, the amount of training that I've already had Paige go through is pretty significant. She's gone to, uh, probably, I would say, three weeks total of training. In fact, she had training on Thursday and Friday last week. Um, because of all these nuanced rules about data and NCIC rules and, um, all these anacronyms, uh, and it's, it's, it's important because you have to, uh, be very careful with how you handle information and and like what's releasable and what's not releasable. Uh, so yeah, I I can't say enough that that, uh, we, I I know that Andy and the mayor are supportive of that. I just want to make sure that council's aware. That's my bigger, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, Chief, I'm I'm glad you brought that up because, uh, I really think it is in the city's best interest to at least be in the middle of the pay range just for, uh, retention, uh, number one. Uh, it makes all of our lives difficult when we have turnover. And, uh, we're not doing anybody any favors when we send new people to get trained again and again and again. So, uh, we as a city had struggled for many years just to even get to the bottom. Uh, we are a successful city and, uh, I believe that being in the middle of the range is is frankly, the the right thing to do.
I'm gonna say, I think sometimes, particularly with these jobs that are hourly wages, we might need to be a little bit higher because we are expensive to live. You know, twenty-two dollars an hour. And I don't, I'm not entirely sure what they make, but twenty-two dollars an hour sounds like a lot. But if you're trying to live in our community, anywhere in Clear Creek, it's not a lot.
That, yeah, no, and I I and I appreciate that. I know that council's gonna, you know, make every effort to to, uh, I mean, you understand that you get that, you know, the fact that both Danielle and Paige, they live here and and i- they live in our community. Uh, Danielle lives in Georgetown and Zach as well lives in Georgetown. So I I mean, it's it's hard to find good quality, uh, dedicated, loyal, you know, hardworking people that are a, th- they're gonna, they're gonna go where that wage is gonna, um, where they can make that wage. And and so unfortunately, it is expensive in Clear Creek. There's just no doubt about that. So, uh, and yeah, it's it's, that's tough. So. Well, I'll, if there's, unless there's not any other questions, I'll just keep moving, moving on down. Um, so I believe the next thing that was on that list was, uh, TVI bumpers, which is tactical vehicle in intervention, basically like the pit maneuver. It's not something that our officers have been trained to do. However, in the time that I've been here in Idaho Springs, I really am concerned about, uh, there have been times when our officers are put in that in very difficult positions. And what I mean by that is I seventy is, as you guys all know, is this corridor, which is like this choke point for issues. And what I mean is, I hear things starting at Summit County, and then we're notified that it's coming, something's coming through the tunnel, and now it's coming down through on I seventy. Uh, we've, I've given examples and had some stories to share with, uh, the community and council about, you know, uh, one of the sergeants having to go up, went out of the highway because there was a an el- an elderly individual driving the wrong way on I seventy. Um, and he he basically just kind of had to put his his patrol car in front of that guy and and thank heavens he stopped. Uh, there's been multiple other instances where people have made a ma- made a bad decision to to run from from law enforcement, whether it's the sheriff's department or our officers. And we've used spike strips successfully. But then the people continue, so they don't stop. Um, it doesn't automatically stop the car. So what these bumpers do, um, is they protect the the front area of the vehicles. And it, wha- what we would do is we would just start making it the standard for all of our uh, new purchases of vehicles. And then we still would need to, uh, get our, uh, get an an instructor to a, one of our people would need to go to an instructor class down the road. And uh, and then they can come back and teach, uh, teach that uh, technique to the other officers as far as stopping and emo- trying to immobilize cars that are are not pulling over. It, I I hate to say it, but I just feel like we keep data on that. I I didn't bring, I didn't look at it before this meeting, but I believe we've had, we've been involved in upwards of a dozen pursuits this year already. Uh, uh, and and, uh, we don't just, we don't take those things lightly because it's dangerous. So that's what that is in reference to. And like I said, once their vehicles are outfitted with that, then it would just be a part of the builds in the future. So I'll pause and take some questions on that one.
Chief, is there any way that this this particular wish could be stre- uh, stretched out over the course of the years as we replace? And just maybe aim for two upfront?
We could. We definitely could. Uh, it's it it, the only issue is that it becomes yeah, it it, we definitely could do that. We definitely.
Since it's there on your list, I think there's. I think there's a couple of things that are more important, um, right up the bat. And again, I didn't, we didn't start out with a number that we are in surplus for this year. So I'm not taking notes on how much we're spending so far.
Sure.
Whoever was gonna get their wish list.
That's definitely her. That was definitely one of my thoughts. I I I don't disagree with you.
I mean, if there are two cars that stay in town and they have them on there first, and then, why?
Go ahead.
And then we add them to the cars as we replace them, um, would that be fiscally, fiscal, fiscally feasible?
Well, we're talking about nine hundred dollars per car is what the cost is. So it's not an exorbitant amount of money, not to, not to say that that's cheap, but but keeping in mind that we do have officers that have, uh, some of our officers do take their cars home. So we we don't hot seat, meaning like the the cars are assigned to the officers themselves. Uh, the fleet, the fleet tends to work better that way versus only having like a total of three police cars and then they're constantly used twenty-four seven. So that's why we have nine patrol cars. So that, so the problem then becomes, you may have somebody on duty that has that or somebody that does not have that and then need that. So that's, that's, but it's not uncommon to do what you're suggesting to just start rolling it into each build in the fleet. And then you just absorb it that way.
That's not even fun. The whole fleet that we have, correct? Am I doing?
Nine times nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the world regret.
Yeah.
And Jimmy, you had a question?
I've. Well, I, I don't know, Chief, you, I'm trying to play devil's advocate.
Play your advocate, pardon?
Yep, and which is a double edged sword that you you know that doing TVIs and pit maneuvers is, you know, i- it's no different than pulling your pistol out and shoot somebody. It's it's an act of deadly force. So it it, you know.
No, it's not. I mean, I I politely, I politely disagree with you. That is not, that that is not, it is considered a use of force. And that's why you need to not, you know, like, try to do that to somebody who's has like expired registration on their car. Um.
But it's fair, but it's fair. Go ahead.
Oh, but you're also, there's also limitations on that. You you know, you don't, eh eh, there there's no extr- eh, there's no easy answer to that. If somebody's going a hundred miles an hour, um, you're not going to be trained to to use to do that type of maneuver because that's completely unsafe. Unless the person's already murdered a couple of people, then that might change things. So I mean, everything is, everything is based on the specific information of what you know at the time. And and what I've taught, what I was gonna mention was that we've, there's been times we've spiked people and they continue at twenty miles an hour up Floyd Hill. Then they go over the by by Genesee and then they they continue down towards the metro area. And we don't have, all we do is continue to spike them and they just continue to go at a slow speed. Eventually, we've had a few chases where we've just stopped. And then they're found somewhere down in Lakewood or something with all the tires. Um, and it's now another agency's involved. And so those situations would be ideal to use a maneuver like that to safely get somebody to to stop. So I understand there's extreme videos out there of high speeds. Those are all things with it. It's all based on the training. Again, the culture of the organization, the fact that we have in-car dash cameras now, the, which allows us to be able to see what people are do, you know, to 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 coach and see what people are doing. The the alternative is to just have a no pursuit policy. I mean, a lot of, a lot of agencies have have considered. But but there's also, I I I really feel like law enforcement is doing itself a disservice. A lot of the material I've read, like the city of Oakland, for example, their, uh, governor of California, and I'm talking, yes, California, has pled with the the police chief in Oakland and the Oakland Police Department that they need to be more aggressive in stopping people. Because what happens, it creates a culture of people just drive recklessly. And now your your fatalities go up and your injuries go up because people just drive recklessly, knowing the police aren't gonna try to stop them for minor traffic violations. I mean, pursuits and whatnot, we, this could be an an hour or two long discussion just with council on that one topic.
This is, this is. All right, yeah. Uh, any more, uh, questions about the bumpers? Uh, then, uh, Chief, uh, please, uh, next item, if you would, please.
Sure. Uh, the next thing that was on there is, uh, the state of, there's a lot, a lot, a number of agencies, a lo- of, and I, again, I apologize, I don't have that document with me. But that have invested in, uh, license plate reader cameras that actually, they don't take live video, they're not live video, and they're not recording video. They're just taking a snapshot of license plates. And for instance, there's actually, these cameras exist all over the Denver metro area. They exist in different parts of I seventy, including on. They exist in different parts of I seventy, including on Georgetown. And Summit County is looking to purchase thirty-three of these cameras. What, what they, what they do is they provide us a, an investigative pathway for. Situations in which we've experienced as a community. When we had the uh, the people that came into town and broke the door to the Shell station. And they hooked a chain to the ATM and pulled it out of the front door. But they were driving stolen vehicles, those vehicles would have alerted our officers that they've, that they were in our city. They, they're, so these cameras are connected to the. Uh, national database for stolen vehicles or missing people. We have had people that have come into our community that are reported missing, whether it's somebody that's elderly and confused, it's driving away. Driven away from um, a loved one somewhere down in the metro. And the information is kept for no more than thirty days, so. And the reason, we've had a number of hit and runs, I mean, we've had trucks that have run over. Uh, city property, city lights, the, the light by city hall that was run over. Uh, this would give us an investigative way to actually. Find or potentially locate the people that are do, that, that, that are, that have done those things, um. So they're called flock cameras, they're uh, they're very, very easy to uh install. They don't, they just use solar and so. The other thing that for us is that if investigative wise, we see that a, if we're investigating an issue with a license plate. We would be linked and have the ability to access that data. In the entire United States for any coun- any city, county or uh. State entity that has these cameras, we would be. Able to, to access that information, which is pretty powerful when you're talking about, I mean. Heaven forbid, I, you know, we've been working on the Beth Miller case and reviewing that, I've explained that to counsel. I can only imagine if you would have had, at least had this information when the young girl went missing. And you can capture that and know these were the, the vehicles that were, were in the, in the city, so. That's, it, that is um. Uh, that's just a more modern, that's more modern police work and policing, uh, I realize that I. I'm a person of privacy as well, and so I want my privacy protected. I know that's, that can spurn these kinds of conversations, uh.
I, I, Chief, I just, I guess I'm missing something, where are these cameras mounted and why are they an invasion of privacy?
Uh, well, they're not an invasion of privacy, some people would say that. The government, if the government is collecting information about me, well, then that's an invasion of my privacy, however, they would be. Near the two forty-one and the two forty, our most common exit ramps. Uh, off of the roundabout, somewhere near where the current police station is or. Along Colorado, right where, kind of where Jenny's Market or Hill Daddy's Restaurant was. Somewhere in that general areas, we're gonna be able to capture that and then also at the two forty. Somewhere near where either the Shell Station or the Maverick is. The vehicles that are basically entering into the city, you know, hi- the highway patrol, they love to have these out on the highways, I, that's not really. Uh, of huge interest to me because I don't need to know, um. Uh, but inside a stolen car hits and it's out on the highway, it's probably already through my jurisdiction or our jurisdiction, so having, having. Go ahead.
How, how much are the cameras each?
Uh, well, there's an initial cost of six thousand dollars per, um, yes. Uh, okay, it's six thousand dollars. Of. Um, to install the two cameras and then it's six thousand dollars. For the, for the maintenance of those cameras for the first year, but then there's an ongoing cost of. After the first year, it would be a six thousand dollar, so basically what that does is it. Gives us, we don't have to manage them, if they break, they fix them, we don't have to manage the information. It, we just have access to the information and they're uh. It's almost like you're leasing it, they, they'll replace them, they, they. There's no work on our end, you know, I don't have to have Paul and his team go and and deal with this piece of equipment. They're solar.
Yeah, I I'm familiar with the, with the idea, I just wasn't sure how, where, where they were going. Um, and I, you see them all over Denver, I imagine, like those are the ones you're talking about, they're on poles all the time.
Well, and what I would guess, I would almost kind of guess that what would likely start to happen too. Is that we will, our phone will start to ring at our police department because. There could be things going on in Denver when they're putting their license plates, they're. They're, it, you know, investigating some crime and all of a sudden they're like, hey, that was, that vehicles in Idaho Springs on such and such a day. In time, can you help us? And so I also envision that partnership with. Other agencies along the corridor and I mentioned to the mayor and Andy, I do have a concern, we, our mountain bike park is, is, is uh. It's gonna, I shouldn't call it a mountain bike park, but the, the Virginia Canyon Mountain Park, I mean. I have concerns about, there are groups that go down, go around and steal mountain bikes or steal road bikes, there's. I, you know, and and when we have a parking deck, when that, when we finally end up with a parking structure, I think that's another thing that's, that. We, we're gonna wanna be able to not only deter crime, but solve crime.
Would these assist with uh amber alerts?
Yes, they would, because those, those license plates are entered immediately if, if there is a license place associated with an amber alert.
Because I don't, like, I've had problems with red light cameras, these are supposed to be pictures of your car and you're in and. My car got tagged in a red light camera and it took me two years to get. My car out of this and I had nothing to do with it, I wasn't anywhere near, but it was, and my, my issue is. When there are mistakes, it's difficult to get mistakes out of this and just, this doesn't feel good to me, I don't like it, so.
Well, but the, these aren't involved with citations, they're just.
No, but they're tracking people and they're tracking people for thirty days. If your, if the information is already wrong in there or it's being tracked, that makes me very uncomfortable.
I, I get, and I get philosophically why that is. But I guess I just live on the side of the law that if you're gonna arrest me for something that I did, then I deserve it. And if I am gonna get in trouble for something I didn't do, then hopefully my innocence will be proven by that.
You and I both know that doesn't.
Uh, and I could say that as a white middle aged woman.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think if you got a room, but the government knows your house layout, so.
I have a phone.
That's just, I mean, I totally understand what Chief is saying.
Yeah.
I empathize.
I think that Chief could explain a longer conversation, how they work.
One hundred percent.
And and we're not making, we're not actually, we're not gonna say this is what we're spending today, we're just getting. So I think there's some conversation and I think that's a good idea.
Exactly, yeah.
And then, Chief, uh, well, let me just ask, is there anything further on the uh flock license plate readers?
Okay, not at all, in fact, I, I, I li- I'm, I'm really, I'm actually empathetic and I understand, I think these are. Healthy, very healthy uh discussions and I know that there's, there's dirt certainly. Um, can be strong opinion about uh one way or the other about, yeah, I'm on for that or no, I'm absolutely not for that. I, I totally get that and and um I understand that, so. Uh, we can talk about it more, like I said, it's, I'd prefer to be there in person anyway, but. We can also have a representative from that uh industry. Uh, join us on another call to maybe answer more detailed questions and, and I can provide more information. Uh, to counsel, just, just so that there's a full picture, full background instead of uh. This little brief fifteen minute conversation.
But that sounds good, Chief, uh, next up I have uh the drone uh search and rescue. Uh, and if you would not mind, I thought you had a particularly interesting. Uh, story that you were telling about, I think it was a toddler, maybe two, three years old. That was lost, really massive cornfield and.
Yeah.
Possible that kid would have been the spot except for, uh, there was like infrared was one of the things and. It made me think about Virginia Canyon Mountain Bike Park as uh sunset comes, if somebody's injured up there off trail. Uh, but if you wouldn't mind, just sharing or elaborating a little bit on this drone.
Sure, you know, uh, the, again, I. Most modern police agencies are, are starting to go down this path, part of it's because the cost has just. Come down so much with that technology, you know, you, you look at bigger agencies, larger agencies that actually have helicopters. Um, that's obviously, you know, that, that's. This is a, really a poor, a poor man's way of having that technology at your fingertips, uh. And the sheriff's department, uh, Clear Creek County Sheriff's Department does have. Uh, two drones, they have a drone that is an outdoor used drone, but they also have a smaller drone, a much smaller one that. You can actually use inside of like to do building searches, which is really smart because that way, you know, you can actually. Go through buildings with haven't, without having to necessarily put a human being in harm's way right away.
Sure.
Um, but what I'm proposing is really more because of the mountain bike park, having been up there myself multiple times now. I understand how that can actually be, it is a large piece of property, it's a large area and. I, I don't know if I. I think that having that is the, having a drone and having the ability to. To monitor the park and monitor what's going on at that, you know, within the park. On occasion, usually the flying time for what we're looking at is like thirty minutes, so. It, it, it's not like you, you, you have this, this device up there and, and you're just like spying on people. Um, you, you check the area, just like you would be checking the area if you were on foot or on a bicycle. It is not easily accessible and, and I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to. Share that until you go up there, it's awesome and it's fantastic, but it's not the e- most easily accessible area. So, the other thing is, you know, we have, some of the accidents that we have are pretty serious out on the highway. And that's pretty common practice now as well, that you use that to document those actual crash scenes, um. Uh, and then. And, and then also, I, you know, I, I just wanna share with you a, a personal story. When I was with my prior agency, I was working on Thanksgiving during the day and. Came to work one day and real, and was told that the night shift had a missing person and there was an, it was an elderly man who had walked away from a facility. And it was, it was, mind you, Thanksgiving Day, so we, we, we had a, a mass effort. Uh, a, a mass search and rescue effort and it was in a neighborhood. So it's, it was in a neighborhood, we're, we're putting out code reds to tell people, please check your backyards, please check your private property. And it was really tragic and it was unfortunate because. We never found that gentleman for, for two days and then ultimately found him um deceased in someone's backyard. And, you know, we didn't have that technology. I, I, and I really feel strongly that if, if you had an event like that. And you had the ability to, 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 to run something, to look for heat signatures, you know. Uh, that, that, that person may not have um passed away, so. Uh, you know, having firsthand experience with something like that, uh. Uh, it's just, it's just another thing that I think sometimes people don't necessarily think about for, for the use of, of that type of equipment.
Well, on a stunning level of probably hypocrisy, I actually don't have any problem with the drone. I mean, I freely admit that I'm like sitting on two different sides of the fence.
I get you though.
Um, because I think it's perfect for our Virginia Canyon Mountain Park, but I also think for accidents. This gives you a bird's eye view and doesn't put any of our staff at risk.
And Chuck was actually talking about a story of a young girl that was just recently found in a cornfield. Or woods and she was sleeping, she was ten years old and she was a sleepwalker and they had stumbled across her. By, by, with a drone, that heatsickie, one that sees, that sees the heat. And that is a pretty amazing story and she was alive, so that was.
And you have war, Jimmy?
Yeah, they, you know, well, state patrol uses as chief, well, as a per all their, so they're uh. Uh. Their VCU team, their vehicle crime unit team, for all, every fatal or whatever on the highway. They, they use those drones and like, they can, some of them have like a. Like a luminol effect of paint marks that they'll put at, you know, however they do that and then the drone. Can see those marks and they'll put that accident back together tomorrow even, so, you know, it's a traffic. Kind of upliftor that they can.
Take with them, I know.
Well, they can just let traffic go and then tomorrow a trooper can park on the shoulder and reconstruct the entire accident.
Yeah.
Oh, with a drone, right? So, and then, yeah, I'm kind of a drunky, but, yeah, so I bore them and, you know, like. My dog was attacked by a bear on Wednesday night, that and.
My god.
Oh, yeah, so my puppy wasn't too young, but I have drone with, with night vision and I also have a drone with thermal.
Is he okay?
Yeah, he's alright, I mean, spent eight hours in surgery.
Jimmy, I think you need a drone with a firearm.
Yeah, I know.
No, Jimmy does not need a drone with a firearm.
Jimmy has, Jimmy has three drones and a firearm, so Jimmy wanted to. So, but that's how I wanna find it. On that, cause as you know, I have thirty-five acres of like.
That's kind of what, that's kind of like our Virginia mountain park, like I worry about, I really worry about our ability to get people out of.
Well, yeah, like Jimmy was saying with thirty-five rugged acres.
Yeah.
No, I don't want.
I mean, good luck.
Which is trying now by inside.
You know, all I need is a, a baby necklace. Now and I'm, I'm good to go.
What happened, I'm over it.
So, so spending money on, on, on drone equipment, needing night vision. Or, or thermal imaging and stuff, I think is really, really, really.
That's some, that's some.
Some good technology, it, it is, and I think it's a really, uh, it's, it's a. It's a really good spot to spend the money for help or, you know, the community and. And what we're gonna use that equipment for, it, drones are, are absolutely amazing, we use it for. Big recoveries that you can't even see, like fifteen miles up one oh three. You got a car, I mean, three thousand feet down, you can't even see it and so we'll send a drone to it. And find it, go down to it and then, and then I'll shoot video and pictures of the entire area. And how to determine, and then at home, I can just pull it up on my laptop. And print the whole image of the topo map and figure out how to recover the vehicle, it's a huge thing that. It's really, really, really beneficial.
Uh, I, I, I think we're probably all in agreement on this and I just wanna ask before we move on, does anyone have uh? Any further questions about the drone expense, okay? Uh, well, thank you, uh, Chief, uh, what do you have next for us?
Uh, I think that about wraps up here, that's plenty, um, I think that uh, what I'd like to do is. I know we're gonna continue to have some discussions and I can talk with Andy and, and the mayor too about when to get. A little more information to the council as a whole on the flock cameras, because I think it's, I think it's definitely worth. Having further discussion about and a- again, I, I, I fully respect if, if, if. If, if the majority say, hey, that's not something we're, we wanna go down that path that right now, that's fine, I mean, that's okay. I, I just think that it's definitely a technology that we need to talk about and um. And uh, anyway, so we, we can do that. Outside of that, Mayor and, and Council, I don't think I have anything further for tonight, I, I think that. Uh, I, I'll wrap up by just saying, yeah, let's just, let's keep our employees, uh. All, all city employees, I mean, I'm not just talking PD, I'm talking everybody, all city employees in mind as far as. Uh, making sure we retain folks.
Absolutely, Chief, and Kate had a question for you.
And this kind of goes for the rest of the, the, the department heads, Chief, it, I don't know if this is something I can ask for Chuck, so I'm just gonna ask it and then you can tell me if I'm wrong. Can you get more specific about the amounts that you're looking for? Because just getting, I mean, I know that we have a range, but I'd like to know specifically what range.
Fifty.
Yeah, uh, yeah, for, on the.
Roughly.
For, yeah, what, what he's looking for, employees for raises, um, if you could get me to like what you're specifically thinking about.
And, and I, I would just inject like uh much, uh, many of the positions are tracked with the CML. And they put out the salary survey every.
Are tracked with the CML and they put out the salary survey every year.
Nice.
And, uh, we, that, that's what we used, uh, just recently, you know, we had to post Jonathan Kane's position. And I, I couldn't do it without addressing mid, uh, range salary.
So you're kind of, Chuck, you're already looking at that like a.
Well, yeah, and I wanted you to know, so we didn't pull numbers out of the year that, if you look, that is the middle of, of the range.
Okay.
Chief is, uh, uh, a little different with, uh, law enforcement. It, it doesn't matter as much like, uh. City size. Uh, a good example in our area and, and of course I'll let Chief, uh, speak to this. But you know, for years, we had been the training ground for the county. And that is the last thing you wanna do. Uh, particularly now, we're investing, say, ten thousand dollars for somebody to go to the academy. We're, uh, we're covering, uh, and admittedly, they do have. To pay a portion of that back if they don't stay with us.
Right.
A couple of years, but I'm just saying, you don't want to be a training ground for any other agency and. And really mid, mid-range, just for the sake of being competitive. I, I think does ev- all of our citizens a service.
Okay, cool.
I, I'm, I'm gonna have to say it again. I would like mid-range and a little higher. Because I think it is expensive to live here and we like our people to be close. And if our people are living here, they are experiencing the challenges of the cost of it. So. That, that's one that I'm gonna continue to repeat, just for warning.
Well, you're right, there's no, I mean.
And, uh, uh, Ch- Chief, uh, anything further?
No, Mayor, Council, I appreciate it and I appreciate the flexibility and, and allowing me to do it this. Uh, attend this meeting this, this way today and, uh. We'll see if.
Yeah, thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your, uh, your time there and safe travels.
Okay, alright, thanks. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, looks up, uh, like, uh, next up, we will discuss, uh, streets. And, uh.
Mayor, would you like to take a short break and, uh?
No, I'm teasing, of course.
I apologize, a little late getting here, but, uh, I was on Diddy.
No, that's, that's, uh, that's very nice.
Only cause I can smell it.
I know. Uh, there's one vegetarian there. Uh, there are two others. Well, it's gonna be a long one tonight, so.
Blake wants some, for sure. Jeremy couldn't dig it. Oh, I guess not.
Is he, is he on the fires in there in Miami?
That is okay.
Uh, I don't think so, but it's interesting that you brought that up, uh, because you know, he did volunteer to go, uh, to California, I think, for.
Like only touch one.
Maybe, uh, maybe a week.
Wash your hands first.
A week or two, I know he went with, uh, some, he was there with other.
Oh, there was a horrible fire yesterday. Right down here in your, uh, EBS.
Wow.
Some kind, yeah, did you not see that on Facebook?
Oh wait, that was a car fire, wasn't it? I, I actually did hear that.
Wow.
Why, baby? Not while we're digging, are we?
That's okay. I would imagine.
Definitely not.
They heard it got like a little bug.
I got a stress rash.
Some, uh, soft treats over here if anybody would like.
Thank you very, very much.
I totally have one of those.
Have you? Cause you've never had one. I'm, you guys have been stressed for like two weeks, so.
I know, okay.
It's almost like a history.
Yes, okay.
But.
Cause one of the things that I would say could be precursors to a weird cancer.
It is, and that's very true. No, it probably, is it going away? Take an allergy pill if you don't take them already and a double one if you do. Which I didn't know that you do it, like, I was supposed to take eight of them because I got like my face. Like camping, I was closing my eyes. Good enough. I've been terrified for years.
Yeah, there's like, uh.
Those.
But the festival went well. No, went well. Authors were happy, businesses were pretty much happy. Um, I think there's some work to do, you know, making that transition. But it wasn't a bad thing, it was just me making guys.
I just, I just wanted to get.
The keynotes were wonderful, like if you didn't get to see them. Joanne Greenberg at ninety-two was absolutely.
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah.
Sandra Dallas, I didn't realize she was in her eighties, she was fabulous. She was wonderful, like they were both absolutely wonderful, all the authors. I went, I tried to try, like as many authors as possible. All the authors I went to were amazing. The people that came to it had a great time, my young authors.
So cute.
You guys, they, one of the kiddos were.
Eight hours of surgery.
And. I haven't finished my budget, but I'm pretty sure I'm gonna be able to get substantial amounts of library.
Oh, that's so wonderful. Thank you so much.
Well, I feel bad. I feel like I made the library staff crazy for a week.
I'm ready, man. I'm ready for some pizza. With some, uh, some exotic meat.
We don't have any staff.
Well, I think.
Everything is like others doing.
I think that, um, they gave out a lot of like signs and buttons and things. Because they set up all the hose after all, while, um, our festivals going on. And Libby Chris has had a very positive response. I took all the Miss Honey Bun sign.
Well, nice, nice. I mean, that wasn't really the, I was just saying that. Again, we don't have any staff in the library. Like we're getting down with like the bits and pieces, yeah.
So it's no joke, they're not.
Well, I'll know, I'm gonna finish this.
I'm more than trying, I can't know age.
And it's gonna be restricted by.
Generally avoid.
But damn.
And you don't get the bond, I'm sure. I, I, I never should have a job when I come back from first night, just like.
You know, cause they don't get these driving school CPW. They trap them, they should don't have a position. So like, it's not like the. Cags.
Truck or whatever, right? You know what I mean? I didn't know. I thought it was two trucks.
The bond is, is that we're making up for the. Making up for the fact that Anderson, because of the way our, you know, fluctuations. Fuck two days.
There was over eighty, forty, fifty dollars.
I say sixty-nine thousand dollars, because I remember one of them was like a lot of money. Um, Libby says five hundred thousand, but it's still, I'm, we're down from twenty-seven employees.
And that's another.
Team and Doyle doesn't have.
Airproof dumpsters.
Twenty-six to fourteen.
You know.
I'm gonna be coming in less than five weeks.
I, I, I got one with the Mars goes up, but it's more resistant.
Uh, so my vertebrae chooses with the other ones.
Every day we got upright or dumb shoulder.
Racker.
Cause he's in there.
Have to have one of my vertebrae clicking off my nerves and. Pull back.
They need to check my dog attached to.
Above and beyond.
Take out of my drone.
Do you know somebody else that not?
How old's your dog? What's that? Come back for a trial about that specific.
And do, take out of my drone.
Right, no. Searching, yeah, right.
He was hurt bad, dude. That cut all, almost cut his wrist off. Yes, so.
Well, see, the only bears that I have seen, we've looked at each other and I've been like, where are you going? He's like, where are you going? We went the opposite directions.
We had one living next door. You must have seen him, the mom and two babies.
Oh, they were at my house. Yeah, I got pictures of it.
Even, they were living next door as long as all the apples were still there, now they. But they did rip the front of our shut off.
Mine is raccoons.
They didn't get anything.
The raccoons trying to molest the trash can. The trash can over, they potty on the deck, making the dogs crazy, and then they laugh at the dogs and run away.
No, I actually looked out the window and I could see the mama bear trying, I mean. She didn't try, she just ripped it off. Where Dylan goes? He's busy now on his male pizza, it's really good.
I told him he could take well on his, on his way, he picked it up for us.
He said if Janine went here, he'd have a meat one.
Does, does Dylan eat meat?
No.
Sorry.
I wasn't sure.
He doesn't sneak one in though.
No, I always say I don't care.
Do you eat fish?
Jerry eggs.
Jerry eggs.
Yes.
It's actually very hard to give up.
Oh, yeah. Like cheese is a food group.
I agree. I'm going on vacation, not vacation, I'm going on a work trip and I'm hanging out with a friend next week. My kid's like, well, what are you gonna do? I'm like, we're gonna talk and eat cheese. Like, that's what we do is we eat cheeses.
Yep, with wine.
No, actually the wine wasn't necessary.
He says.
Right.
It is necessary.
I agree. I do like that. My wife and I'll do that and I'll load it.
Three months, no booze. No smokes.
No fun for you, Kate?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Three months. That's just from the surgery, I have to start like.
Such a peach.
I've already started. Technically, I haven't done anything since Saturday.
I am so proud of you about the smoking.
I can do it only for surgery, Chuck.
It's like losing best friend.
You can do it.
Not my best friend. I don't smoke during the week. I don't smoke Sunday through Thursday either. It's so cold, doesn't matter.
Was such an ass when he quit smoking. Every family member wanted him to live. But he was so bad, we all begged him to start smoking again. Please, dear God, we'd be throwing packs. There's some matches, you know?
He was just a meanie?
Oh, oh.
Are you not mean?
I mean, if you would ask him what time it was, he, he would scream back at you, get a lunch, you know, I mean, oh, yeah. Oh, he was vicious.
So I, I, Saturday night is the last time I smoked and then I, if I won a cigarette, I'll have one on Thursday. So I figured, wow, that's just spending or whatever. I did it with my knee replacements. I was, I didn't smoke for five months. And the second they said I was good, I was like.
Delicious.
Well.
Yeah, no drinking.
No drinking.
No drinking.
That was bad.
Alright.
No, they don't suggest it when you put back surgery, they, it's mandatory of your insurance, won't break you off.
No, yeah.
You do not get to get it, like.
How'd you, how'd you do with the drink then?
I was taking eighteen. Oh, same thing. I don't drink on the, during the week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. When you're, are taking that many, you're in that much pain and taking that many opioids, drinking and smoking do not sound.
Well, they just don't mix.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't do it, I could, yeah.
Well, they do, man.
I mean, he keeps saying that, I was like, I have never done that before in my life, no, with no, I, no idea. The most I did is when my friends came over and she was smoking pot and I was still taking my opioids. And I had a dragon, I was so hammered, I was like, I gotta go that down.
Between the two, yeah.
Yeah, uppers, upset, uppers and downers, sorry.
I don't know what it was. That was it, I was like. I don't care. It's legal.
Drinks like fish.
I know what I do, I'm a townie, so I go into the hot stores.
Only one. So she's only done that.
There's no judgment, you're right.
Yeah, no, I don't really smoke that much.
Okay.
When you haven't had a drink for three months, you're like, please, Lord, anything. Been watching Reba and Murder She Wrote for three months. I felt like to retain, I could not. I was like, any, anything more complicated than that? And I was like, I don't know. I'm not a good drug, I'm not a good drug dealer. I don't like.
Alright, is, uh, everybody good with moving forward?
Yeah.
Alright. Well, Paul, thank you. Uh, we're looking at, uh. Anything's off with, uh, streets? That sounds good to you.
Absolutely.
By the way, I don't think anybody cares, it's just, uh, that was the order of council head.
Fair. Uh. Overall budget, there's not gonna be much changes, it's probably just, um. Ahead increases, um. Uh, based just on what we spent over the last year or two and, and increases based on that. Um, the biggest thing for streets. Would be a motor grader, which is. Not critical that we have one, but it'd be nice to have one, so this is on the wishlist and, uh. Uh, new motor graders, we don't need a new motor grader. Um. It can be upwards of five hundred thousand dollars. These are not cheap pieces of equipment. Uh, we need something that has, uh, low hours and it's fairly well maintained. We've looked at, uh, the county, but they're not, uh. Uh, we're not gonna be selling one this year. Um, so. A used motor grader. Uh, we're probably looking somewhere in the range of, um, seventy to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It really just depends on where we're picking it up and, and what, where.
Just for the uninitiated, can I ask what the motor grader does?
So it's the big piece of equipment that has the blade in the middle.
Mm-hmm. Of course.
So we need it for our, uh, our dirt roads. And that's to, to make the embankments, we can also clear the ditches with those. Uh, the other use for it would be as a, an auxiliary plow in the, uh, in the wintertime. We could even have a plow attachment on the front of it. We wouldn't be able to go down many streets with this piece of equipment, uh, uh, Colorado Boulevard and Main Minor Street.
Is it too heavy?
It's just too wide.
Oh, oh. So what is the Komatsu that you did, like that I saw you snow plowing in this, after, in, in March?
That is a wheel loader.
Okay.
Or a front end loader. And, uh, that one articulates in the middle, so it's a lot easier, even though they're big, they're easier to get around some of those turns, because of the, the articulation in the middle.
He's a pull-up on you, go right there, um, just like a John Deere, yeah, motor grader. You'll kind of see what Paul's talking about. Where it can have absolutely like three blades on it, right?
It would be useful for helping with, uh, clearing a, uh, minor street in the downtown. It has the, the ability, that blade has the ability to shift to the side, so. Um, right now we do.
Uh-huh.
It's really long, look.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But they're really versatile, like, so Paul could like do minor street like two full passes. Of, and that's it.
For Colorado or.
Yeah.
So the county has one and do we have any?
They have like five.
Is there no way that we could lease one from them?
They don't have one for sale right now.
For lease, just to borrow it, like, will we need it? I mean, wouldn't they wanna make some money? Why, why, why would that be a bad thing?
It, it comes down to the maintenance of it. It's the same reason that we don't like to loan out our equipment or lease out our equipment with other cities.
Right, yeah, we will loan out.
It comes back broken and the, the onus is on us to fix it now, so.
And, uh, Paul, I just want to bring up also, uh. There's been some, um. Mitigating, uh. Items, uh, recently and it's not insignificant, but I'm just guessing we have probably raised. About half of that, just with the sale of surplus equipment. Uh, I don't know if that track, uh. Uh, that, with, uh, the excavator was sold with the trailer. I know we were looking at selling it, but, uh. I've just figured between that and some of the other more minor items, uh, we, we may end up raising half that money.
There's a potential for that, for, for getting the bulk of it from, uh, from the sale of that. It depends on whether that piece of machinery sells or not. Um, I know, um, John Kane had asked about it for, for his city over there. And what a rock bottom price we would give them for that and. And, uh, I threw out a number, we'll see if they can, uh, my initial ask for that piece of machinery was fifty thousand dollars. It is an older piece of machinery and it doesn't have a lot of hours on it, which is not good for diesel, cause they're, they're not supposed to sit around, they're supposed to run. So, um. It's another reason for getting, raise the, rid of the piece of equipment, the, uh, X-grader, cause we don't use it, it's, it's. The track, metal tracks on it make it almost useless to use on the streets. It's too big for many places in the cemetery. Um. And, uh, it's too big for some things, small, uh, too small for other things. It's, it's really not a good piece of equipment for us. Um, but there's a potential to, to gain some of those funds for, uh, for a motor grader for that. Um, the, the other ask was going to be for. Um, the, the other ask was going to be for a uh, a mini excavator, now we rented many excavators over the years and we have no problem renting. Continuing to rent them. Um, but we feel that, you know, a mini X would be more versatile for us in those uh, street digs for waterline repairs, sewer line.
And, and they're rubber tracked.
And it's a rubber track, right, it's a, it's a smaller piece of machinery. That would give us that zero clearance uh, uh, three sixty. So we could move dirt a little, and, and it's safer hole.
And it's haulable in-house, right?
It is, it is.
Yeah, moving anywhere.
The big excavator is haulable, but uh, we have to use the dump truck, it's the one piece of equipment that can haul that, because it has uh, the trailer that's all on use air brakes. That's our only piece of equipment, air brakes. Those are the, the wishlist items uh, for public works and, and streets is uh, is a motor grader um. The. Mini excavator, I wouldn't wanna purchase one of these used, uh, they get tore up used, and we don't wanna start out with a torn up piece of equipment. That'd be a piece of equipment I prefer to buy new, so we have warranties on it. And uh, the cost on those, uh, there's little as seven thousand dollars, there's high as thirty thousand dollars, it kind of depends on the package and the size you're getting.
Alright, how is our current work step? Trained on these, do they have to get specific training for each piece of equipment, or?
It's more on the job training, and we're working on that with some of our guys, you just don't get a lot of opportunities, so everybody's pretty well versed with loaders and skidsters. Um. Feel pretty comfortable on, and I try and work, especially our newer guys, on some of that stuff, so they can get those hours and they're, their comfort level up with those. Uh, snow removal is a great opportunity to get some of that done. Um, the excavators, the. The downfall, we only have a couple guys that can really. Operate it competently, and I'm one of them. Uh, if, there's just not a whole lot of opportunity to get somebody out there to, to get those hours and get that uh, comfort level on it, but we have used uh. Josh, one of my newer guys, uh, we have excavations at the uh, or interments at the cemetery. Well, this is a good opportunity to get up there, and you know, by the end of it, he was feeling pretty confident.
Right.
But that's one dig. It takes multiple digs to really get that uh, that level of experience up.
Alright. Uh, Paul, did you have anything further on the streets?
I do not, other than, again, like uh, Chief had mentioned, and I know you guys have mentioned there's uh. Um, salaries for these guys and, and um. You know, we've long retained our guys, I'd like to keep them more. Cost of living has definitely gone up and I'm, I'm uh. Uh, you know, we'd certainly like to see some, some good pay re, pay increases for these guys. We do have levels and, you know, some um. There's room for advancements in, in public works, well. Uh, the, it may not be in position of, of authority, but uh, there's room for, you know, getting some technical trainings like a CDO or. Certifications in water and sewers, that would help increase uh, pay skills for these guys as well, so.
Well, I think we know that it doesn't matter which department it is, we wanna make sure that they're all.
Yeah.
Getting into the fair zone.
Oh no, I'm actually, uh, that's one of my things for the entire city staff, like I told you guys, I don't feel like we are a small city anymore, even though. We're small, we have a big budget, we have a lot of stuff going on, and our small staff. His task would take care of a lot of things, I would prefer them to be a little better compensated than not well enough.
Agreed. Alright, uh, does, does anybody have any uh, questions for Paul regarding streets?
With your mini excavator, are you looking kind of at a middle of the road or?
Really middle of the road, I need something that can fit in our cemetery as well.
Paul, I, I actually should, should throw this out there.
Sure.
I get a lot of complaints, and in fact, uh, my husband tried to like, mitigate, mitigate the problem on Wall Street. Um, is there something that we can buy that would be easy to use, maybe of like a sit down? Version of, like a lawnmower that can hit. The tall weeds that are lining.
Thick weeds.
The, it's pigweed, it's terrible, and it actually did break our, I was almost called you Jimmy. Um, it broke our, our weed whacker, he was trying to do our street. But lining Wall Street in particular, but I know it's uh, everywhere in town, and they're like this tall. And the rate in the crack between.
Yeah.
If you have a sidewalk, we don't have a sidewalk, but if you have one, it's right there, and it. Looks not great, it would be, and I get a lot of complaints personally, and I only bring it up now, if there's a piece of equipment that we could. Buy. That would help make it faster, that would be great.
I agree, I would be nice to, I'll see what I can do to find.
Like a lawnmower that just could just do that side.
And if you get in that skinny, I know exactly, it's like that, here's the street, here's a lot of people's uh, walls, and then there's like this much.
Yeah.
To a little over a foot of space.
And all it does is it, it makes them go everywhere.
Yeah, we have a. It's spinning against a rock wall and uh, it's that.
Well, I'm not talking about particularly rock wall, in fact. I'm talking specifically along Wall Street. Where the drop off is, but I can't speak to everywhere else in town, but, but our rock wall, Doug feels that that. I tell Doug that that is our responsibility, so we do that, and if I have to go out there and handful them, I will do that. But it's actually when it's more in the street, and it's not just my street, it's a lot of people who mention it to me and they just like it to look better, there's a.
I'll see what I can find, it won't be anything that's gonna be like dirt close. Uh, but it would, we could certainly try and.
Slam them down.
Well, keep them down.
Yeah, just uh, just that it has been mentioned multiple times, so, it's a time to buy stuff, let's throw it out there on the wishlist.
A lot of them are too thick though for your regular.
That's because it's been, I mean, that's what I'm telling you.
There, there's a cat.
We have had, and I'll have to see if we still have this piece of machinery, it may have gone away over the years. We bought a big bushwhacker, that's just like a. A large weed eater that has a big spinning blade on the front of it.
That's kind of what we kind of need at this point in time, yeah. It has to come down, because they're, they're fire hazards.
It's made for small trees and, and uh, things like that, to clear out small shrubs.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm kind of afraid that someone's gonna toss a driver's side cigarette out and have all that dried, that's all dried now. And that's all, that's all it takes, that kind of time, so anyway, thank you.
And then all of Virginia are in trouble.
Anything uh, further on uh, streets?
Oh, I do have one question, are the street lamps that I see in here, you have twenty six thousand for, for, um. Is that the street lamps like downtown? Are, are those Excel's problem, are those our problem? Do we have to replace the lamps? What are we replacing with uh?
The, the street lamps, if it's in our budget, then it's the street lamps for, for our city streets.
Okay.
Now, I know uh, Excel maintains a lot of stuff, but uh, there are certain lamps that Excel does not maintain.
Right.
Mm-hmm, really?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, alright, uh, next up, I have parks uh. Paul, do you have that next?
We do have parks.
Okay.
Parks budgets, uh, I don't see where we're making any big changes, leave uh, we bought some uh. Uh, electric mowers and electric. Uh, snow blowers in the past, and I think we're gonna kind of continue down that path, the employees really like them, they're a lot quieter. Uh, we use the electric mower here at City Hall, I don't know if you guys even noticed that they're out there.
I like, I use them too, I like them much better than the.
I do too, I love them.
These guys are battery powered, so we're probably gonna invest in like a couple more batteries, so they don't uh, so they can kind of. Continue, get their job done in one day, sometimes the, the batteries just don't overcharge, as, as, as long as you like. Um, the snow blower has been uh, super efficient.
And it's electric.
It's electric, it's battery powered.
Wow. How many volt batteries is that?
Don't ask me, it's like, it's, it's, it's.
I can't imagine moving a load of snow.
I uh, probably uh, electric uh, Ryobi mower.
Oh.
Uh, but you know, a lot of these are now stepping up, including the snow blowers, to like forty even sixty volts.
Wow.
They're, they're, they're getting pretty big batteries on them too.
I wanna say it is a sixty volt snow blower, uh, it's a pretty hefty battery in this guy.
They're gonna have those stations like the Tesla stations, so tie your mowers and stuff in here.
But we haven't had the same issues like we've had with the gas power stuff, where it sits all year, you don't get a snow.
Then don't run.
For a couple of years, and you're trying to get this piece of machinery running, it's just.
Yeah.
A chore.
Yep.
This thing works every time, little or big snow, it's been, it's been pretty effective.
Wow. That's impressive.
So we're gonna kind of continue down, down that path with getting some more of the.
Cool.
Uh, battery powered uh, tools and parks.
Alright, any uh, questions for Paul on the park budget?
I said, no, no major increases there, just carrying over line items.
Uh. Paul, do you have anything else just generally uh, to share with us on the budget?
In parks, um. I'm pro, I, one of the. Places I'll probably have a significant increase is in uh, contracted services. Uh, that's to help us out with uh, with uh, more of those roof deals that need to be done, or. Uh, some uh. Different landscaping that we need to do, it's just, we've tried to get to some of the smaller projects, we just haven't been able to, to. Find the time and the, the people at the same time to uh, to get some of our smaller projects done, so I'd like to contract a little more of this out. There's uh, we'd like to clean up around the, all the picnic tables at CRC Park. Um, so wanna get a um. Uh, more of a dirt. Or a crusher fine in around those, those, those tables, make sure we get the concrete around all those tables. Just give it a cleaner look and a better edge between the grass and that uh, that area. Um. And, and just kind of continue that, we also need to do some work on the. The riverbank through there and hauling in some large rock. Uh, to help reinforce that riverbank. Um. There, right now, somebody, they've uh, they've built stone, rock and mortar pedestal for a. A light pole that's in there, or a power pole that's, that's at the, the bank. And even it's undermining and washing out, so we need to get some heavy rock in there to, to help mitigate that, that erosion on that bank.
We still try to hire summer help for parks.
We haven't had much luck getting a summer help.
Right.
Um, that was part of the reason getting, you know, the contract services to help the, the parks team out. Uh, we do have two time parks that were, in previous year, had been uh, one person, so that's helped out a lot.
Very good, uh, any questions for Paul? Uh. Alright, Paul, uh, nothing else uh, for us today? Uh, appreciate you putting this together, uh, like you said, uh, I didn't really see any standouts from the, the year before, so. Uh, you, you didn't have a lot of changes.
No.
Just maybe some inflationary.
CIP is gonna be the biggest ones, uh, with uh, you know, the projects, water tank, water tank, water tank, that nature.
Yeah.
We'll uh, we'll get into that in just a little bit.
Yep. Alright.
Something I might mention is uh, council did approve this year's budget, a, a supervisor for uh, public works.
Yes.
And uh, 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 we've had a lot going on. And I talked with Paul about uh, working on getting that uh, job description put together and getting that filled, because I think that's a position that will really. Um, help Paul with, with um, you know, the day to day oversight in the field.
Absolutely.
Another set of hands, this will be a hands-on position. And um, so that is a goal, to get that, that position uh, filled. And that'll give them a little more depth in public works as well.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wanted to just mention that, that, we haven't forgotten about that, that will, that's something we're gonna get filled and get up and running.
Alright.
Uh, we did restructure a little bit in, in water and sewer, water facilities. Uh, so with some of their adjusting staff, there's a second in charge now, uh, working with uh. Um, working in water facilities and um. That seems to be working very well, so a little, little bit more of a structure and, and um. Uh. That, that just helps for the day to day operations.
Alright, well, thanks Paul. And uh. You're up next, uh. Welcome, welcome, uh, come on up. And like Paul, uh, we don't uh, we don't have any particular order, I, I'm just going with the order that council has in their packet, I'm gonna.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that too.
So uh, yeah, I'll give you a minute to bring it up, and I've got in my pack, uh, that we start out with a lot of water fun.
First uh, narrative that's in you, in, in the packet there, um.
Yeah.
Alright, so I put together. Just kind of some goals of what. Um, we like to keep in mind, and all the regular plans and. Keeping things working effectively. Um. The guys like these um, goals. And we follow them whenever. We're, keep all this stuff in mind. Uh, we're working.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We have had. Really good luck, um, keeping. Some people.
Recently.
I agree. Um. We're, especially the, uh, the top three, me. And Billy and Justin. Are kind of all in unique situations to where. We have some flexibility to. Stay on and don't have to necessarily chase the dollar, as hard as. Um. Others would be. But, uh, that being said, um. Over the next, let's see, one, two, three. Six pages. Are, are all um, knowledge and experience. And things that you, you would need to know. In order to be licensed. Um, to run a water or wastewater treatment facility. Um. And it's not necessarily that any of these one particular items are. Some of them are difficult. Uh, the difficult part, it comes into that all of these things affect each other. So, when you change one of them. It changes the rest of. The system, so if you do something at the water plant. Thinking, oh, well, this is gonna solve the problem. It affects. The water quality in ways that you didn't even realize. Because you changed like one thing, so, uh, that's what makes it extremely complicated. When I first started down there, I mean, I've been. I was trained as an auto mechanic. And then did construction. And then while I was doing construction. Uh, I got into electrical. And uh, became a licensed electrician. Now. When the market crashed, I went to work for the city. And I went down there to learn wastewater. And I was just completely overwhelmed. With the list of things. That you needed to know. In order to do water and wastewater. I thought it would be like. I've done these other things before. This will be nothing. But it's not, and it was, and it was hard, and there's a lot of thought that you need to put into. Uh, treating the water. And treating the water for, for the wastewater. Has completely different set factors. Um. Of what you would do and what you wouldn't wanna do. Uh, a lot of the. Uh, guys that are dealing water and wastewater. Are, are beginning to retire now. Uh, Wayne's done. Wayne, Wayne Rainey, Wayne Rainey's done. Uh, Ron's done, Ron, Ron was a, a teacher and a guy that would run around around the United States. Solving everyone's water and wastewater, mostly wastewater he did. Uh, issues. And um. So. The amount of people. That. Are interested in doing this job. Are, they're, they're, hiring pool is quite small. You know, nobody wants to go and work at a smelly building. All day long. That might be it. Plus, if you look at the amount of concepts. And, and knowledge that you need to have in order to do the job effectively. Um, it's. It, it's in the weeds, I tried not to get into the weeds, and you said, don't get into the weeds. And I said, well, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm gonna do my best. But our job is the weeds. And you. We're in the field over here, okay? So, the part that, you know, everyone said, you know, the, the. Whatever we can do to keep everyone paid. Um, especially like, you know, like our lower end guys. um, especially like, you know, like our lower-end guys to help retain them would, would be excellent. You know, and maybe even attract some you, like some Gen Zers. I hear that uh, some of the Gen Zers aren't doing the college thing. Because it's too expensive and this would be one of those things that some of these Gen Zers could get into where you don't necessarily need to go to college. But there's a path to a great career. So, that being said, we'll move on to the really fun part of this big pile of numbers. Sounds good. Uh, so, some of these things are going up. I've heard, I haven't heard back from everyone. You know, chemicals or like HOC contract or stuff like that, but they're talking about like four, five, six percent additional. Um, I'm trying to keep track of that stuff as it comes in uh, on, on the budget line items. So not a huge change, but still a change. We did separate uh, some line items for chemicals to make things a little bit clearer. And we did, what was it, Andy, the water and sewer bill.
What's your, um, it's on your second page of numbers. You have highlighted the um, Chicago Creek sanitation maintenance fee, sewer bill, the water plant, never see it?
Oh, that was because I don't. The, okay, so I moved that to the water. Because it's actually the
From wastewater.
It was from wastewater. And I don't, uh, I remember seeing a like Chicago Creek sanitation. No, that wasn't that. Uh, where exactly that bill comes from. For, because for example, I had put that we would spend two thousand dollars on that. And it wound up being for half the year, two thousand six hundred and seventy-one. So I'm still trying to figure that one out of why it did that. Um, and the, the question here was for me. Did I see the bill? That, that, that's why I highlighted that.
Okay, the other one I have is plant operations contractual. Uh, VM Skata, is that who we contract with?
VM Skata, uh, we contracted Brown Hill to do this data system. Um, and VM is just the virtual management of the, of the virtual network.
So they're gonna go up to twenty-five hundred a month, which would mean about thirty thousand dollars a year versus the twenty-five that we've seen in previous years.
Um, I, I think it's just that you were moving that to line item, uh, right?
Which line item is it? Sorry.
Well, the Skata uh, moved to line item five thousand.
Yes, we moved that to, I moved that to five thousand. And then what did I put up there? Okay, so the lease is up in like June. And they gave me an estimate of, of, of another municipality that does something similar to what we do with ours. And that it would probably be around this twenty-five hundred dollars a month range.
So thirty.
Right, so the water plant, now the water plant is something that is a little bit unusual because we have been monthly paying, paying a monthly bill for the PLCs that they installed this year. So that'll be up. So this year, I think I put, um, what did I put it on the other?
We also have one in um, in wastewater too, so.
We do. So there's a VM Skata for water and a VM Skata for wastewater.
And that would be, like, if I look at the cost per year, it's thirty, it's seventy-two thousand, so you said seventy-five, that's probably gonna be giving it a little bit of add.
Right, well, it was seventy-five, so, um, this I calculated by saying that we're gonna be paying the, the monthly rate of what we're paying for the water plant up until say like June, and then it's actually gonna go down to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Because we're paying more, because we're paying off, we're making payments on the PLC. So for next year, the, 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 that monthly fee should be very similar to what the water wastewater plant says also. But the reason it's more is because we have, we, we added the PLCs in our contract. Alright, uh, most of these notes were for me. Um, just to know what was going on.
You share it with us, you might get the questions.
I know, you, you guys can ask questions.
Some of my notes may not be entirely clear at all. Is everybody good with pages one and two, uh, ready to move to page three?
Okay. And uh, alright, so the water sewer, that was with, with the, with the Chicago Creek sanitation. So we added that.
Yeah.
So that'll actually wind up going along this sixty-fifty line.
Okay.
For the sewer. Okay. Uh, any other uh, big changes here on three? I'm not, I don't really see anything large here. Not particularly.
Yeah.
There may, let's see what's on there. Like fuel for the generators is probably gonna go up. Fleet repair, that's, that's larger than usual because I'm trying to retain that old.
Oh, come on, I mean, that's, I love that truck. That, and you know what, you, you are just saving us because most would be pushing the other way.
No, no, no.
You, you guys are allowing me
to fix up an old truck. And I love old trucks.
Well, I wrote, I wrote to Denver and back, and I'm telling you, it runs fine. I, I think it'll go another hundred thousand miles.
I think it will too.
Yeah.
Um, I like it because it's smooth, the seat's comfortable, you can get in and out of it. You, the, the trucks today, they're building, they're just gigantic. And you have to get like a running start.
And at my height, to get into the truck.
At my height.
Exactly, I'm just saying.
Uh, you can scoot in and out of it really good.
And, and by the way, with your new seat cover, it's like a brand new.
Right. So there's that, and then I covered up some of those rust spots with them, fender flare beholds and.
Alright.
Jimmy, Jimmy made it so that the uh, the ABS lights not on.
Yes, yes.
But that was totally successful. I haven't seen that. I have seen the check engine light pop on and go off.
It's like actually.
Every once in a while.
Yeah, exactly.
But it's still that.
I'm worried about emissions, you know.
Well, I was thinking that it might be something to do with the fuel today from two thousand one. Uh, is there ethanol in it? So that you have to burn more of that.
I, I mean, it is.
I think, yeah, yeah.
It's throwing that.
I'd rather, I'd rather have uh, brakes than.
And I'm sorry, Ed, I'm teasing you because we all like thriftiness and thank you.
I, I just really love old trucks and I would rather keep that for as long as I can.
Alright.
I do have a question on the capital projects. We budgeted, um, online fifty-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, twenty. But three point nine million last for this year, but we spent as of this year like seven hundred and seventy-six thousand. So you still have two point two and that will cover the mon tank.
Yes.
Okay.
And we are pursuing a grant from DOLA. We are, we have our presentation in Ray, Colorado. Who knows where Ray is?
Geez.
Oh, yeah.
Really? Oh, it's a short little jog, hundred eighty-five mile.
They moved the hearings around the state. We were in Montrose last year, maybe you remember our, our last grant hearing. So um, so we are hoping. Yep, we are hoping to uh,
Do they even have a place to put anything on there except for like on the combines?
Is it north of Bringsley?
John Deere dealer or something?
Is it north of Bringsley?
Ray?
No.
No, it's straight out of Colorado.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-four.
Yeah.
But.
Oh, God. So last, it's the last, it's the last town in the state.
In the spirit of your question.
Miles from Nebraska.
I do know there was discussion about even maybe have to stay in other little towns to have accommodations. Because just the fact uh, that DOLA personnel were coming was like monopolizing the hotel.
They gotta, they have a four dealer though.
Okay, not just the.
Wow.
They just, I wouldn't guess that.
That would really help with the mon tank units.
So it'll, it'll, it'll be a whole thing. Yeah, we'll, we'll match it a little more than fifty percent.
Alright, so then.
It's got twenty-three hundred people, it's bigger than we are. Is that Ray?
That's Ray.
W R A.
Bigger than we are.
Yeah. Alright, so we, like, we had the three point nine million. I think we were, they're, they're also expecting maybe like some highway one oh three line money.
Correct.
So Virginia Street money.
And, and you're right.
Twenty, twenty-four, we didn't actually get done.
Yeah.
Some of those projects are just starting up.
Right, and so, uh,
So that'll adjust a little bit here when we get. It will, and we're only June for the six forty-nine. And we hadn't even had started the uh, the Maddie Down project yet. Which they, they turned in a couple of those and they turned in another one, another big app uh, for next Monday.
And we, and where, where are we in Chicago Creek? We're not on one oh three yet, are we?
Uh, that um, went out to bid and we got uh, three bids back and that'll be coming back to council in the near future for uh, recommendation on bid award.
Did they, did they win that?
No.
Oh, well, well, or whoever took down.
Uh, no, 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 not, not the apparent low bidder.
Really?
Still evaluating the, the bids.
All big, huh?
Right, and then, and then to also answer your question, there may be some additional funds to wind up adding to this two point two.
Yep.
This was just kinda like, I guess.
In addition to the one million, do we have anything else we're looking at to help out with our water?
So we're gonna be looking at like highway one oh three line, we're gonna be looking at like the Virginia Street and Virginia Canyon. Uh, water lines will be in there. Hopefully we'll wind up getting some kind of grant for some of that.
Yeah, so we already were successful with a million and a quarter uh, uh, for Virginia Canyon. There was uh, uh, another million dollars uh, for the one oh three. And uh, we're of course going out uh, to Ray uh, for a mon tank. Uh, so uh, there's, there's several millions out there uh, in grants.
How far up Stanley do we go, Mayor? How? Is the city, yeah, oh, we'll just double check with Paul. Paul, how far up Stanley? From the two thirty-nine, is the sea limit there?
The, the sea limit's actually, it gets uh, basically to the last house where um, um.
Chuck, Chuck and Lou Howard's house?
That, that, that is at.
Just before that mill, right around that mill.
Yep.
Oh, God, we go that far?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering.
Stanley Hotel two-story, was I reading that right? I, I don't recall, but that's the best place that we're gonna be able to turn around is right in there.
Yeah.
Uh, with the, right. Where uh, where, you know, public works.
John, where, well, his family, I guess.
Yeah, we can't, yeah. Is it?
So that's a Stanley mine way.
Yeah, but so we have a high end of that property.
Is that?
That's correct.
Oh, thank you.
So they, they, as far as the infrastructure we're talking about there.
There is no, because I've never.
There's no sewer line there? There is a water line there?
There is, okay, that's what I was wondering.
So there is no.
So there's no sewer off of, off of Stanley swimming down to you.
We can't make gravity from, from there. We can barely make gravity fall from our current public workshop.
From first or whatever. They would. Okay, that was my question, because I've never heard that brought up as far as.
Well, we had a development looking at developing the Stanley, Stanley Mine property as some sort of amusement park. And uh, I don't know whatever happened to it, just maybe fell through and no funding for it, but that was one of the, one of our uh, assertions is that they would have to install a force main and, and legislation to get it to our cities.
But they still are on sea, seawater, correct.
Just, just to there.
Yeah, because it's right over there.
Okay, that was my question, because I've never heard of, you know, the streets or anything otherwise on Stanley, so I didn't know how far west the, you know, that, the, the sea line will.
Let's see, uh, anything else uh, on the capital foods? Um, for the water plant, I'm gonna move the money that I have for rock pro mitigation. Oh, yeah, over to next year. The engineering for that is taking an excessively long time. Uh, hopefully, you know, this week, the guy's gonna come for a site visit. And maybe we can get that, um, it's probably too late to start that. No, we won't wanna do that, no we're not.
He might be a little optimistic trying to start it right now.
Right, that seems like a huge project.
Sounds like a drum problem. Plus that, that the Clearwall pump must be replaced finally, the one that I've been waiting.
I saw like a hundred and fifty bid. No?
No.
What do you have planned?
I'm pretty sure that we're gonna get less than thirty.
Okay.
I think I had fifty on it for a long time.
You must have a, a little secret, uh, way to get it.
I did, I did.
Alright.
I, I found some parts that are already in the older, want to be totally reused, so they don't have to do any piping changes. So if they don't have to do any piping changes, that's a, is a whole lot of money. You know, a whole lot of money in labor. Uh, the labor's the hugest chunk of all of them. Every project.
Yeah. Right? What do you have next?
Well, wastewater would be the next one, right?
Yep. That's what I got.
No, the yellow stuff is, you know, I'm not really sure what that's gonna wind up being. Uh, I think there are some more things that go into this financial services line item than just what I have written here. Some of these other ones here, like process control, equipment and repair mates and instruments. I got totally confused and started writing the wrong line on which I did. So keep that in mind. One of them's gonna be oh, hey over and the other one's gonna be way under. I did get rid of the, the internet at the water plant, it'd be cheaper than it was last year.
Oh, my goodness.
Because we went with that Skynet.
Oh.
Not you.
No, but I like Skynet. I think Terminator.
I just can't get it out of my head. It's all good.
Uh, and, cause that was uh, just a crazy price.
Right, and then one of them, I think it, I think it was the wastewater plant. We had been buying two hard line phones, lines.
Okay.
I don't know how long that had been going on, but we only need one. So that's, that, if we're only, that's half price.
Good news.
Half price. Commercial's crazy.
Right.
One day I just was looking at it and I'm like, hey, let's get rid of that.
Yeah, I'm glad you caught that, because like a million years ago, some people would have two lines because they had a fax.
Fax.
And they had to have a designated line for their fax.
Right.
Of course, I am talking like a million years ago, but.
I still got.
Okay, well, most, most folks did, they gave, like, we, we still do lines, but particularly the second.
We, we still do have two for the water plant. One is for the alarm, uh, the Regal call box. And then the other one is for the building alarm. So there's still two up there, but we only need one at the wastewater plant. So, yeah, and then the VM skate is up, the lease is up again. Those guys, the, what they'll do when the lease is renewed, they're gonna replace all of our computer equipment. They'd start over from scratch and fresh, and then any time. They'd start over from scratch and fresh, and then anytime anything goes wrong with the V M, it's free.
So, I have a question because, and maybe you can give me, did we not in March vote to replace. The meters for water usage? We not vote to have fifty or so of those meters? Have we gotten those meters? Are those under your jurisdiction? Where are those meters? Are we replacing more meters? Do we need to do that?
We're thinking, oh, working on those slowly. We, we, uh, I'd asked for funding for D and B that we haven't used. Because we weren't getting a very good response. We, we hung outdoor hangers on everybody's. House and uh we were looking to schedule appointments. So right now, as those appointments are trickling in. We're scheduling one day a week to, to schedule these appointments and then we're just handling that stuff in-house. Uh, we weren't getting the, you know, the forty or fifty that we were, it's, it's uh. I don't know what else to do from here. Uh, it's, it's so time consuming to try and keep track of, of, uh. What's been done, what we need left to do, uh, do, you know, another notification to, to, to folks to get these things done. Um, we can start playing hardball and start sending notification that will shut you off if you don't uh schedule a, a meter replacement.
Was there an issue with equipment that getting here a little too tall or was that?
No, we haven't had any trouble getting a few items, like some uh, uh, some oddball items. We've had a, a long lead time on some equipment, but not, not the majority.
I maybe it was street stuff then, right?
I think you might send out the notices and say, look, you need to, I haven't gotten one, cause I've called and been like, I don't want a new meter, need a meter.
You didn't get a door hanger at all?
I didn't get a door hanger at all.
Then, have we, do we need to work on yours?
Look, finding my water meter was an adventure in and of itself. So maybe you need to come and look at my water meter. Um, the other thing is, so would that mean, that would be in your budget, the towers that we paid for?
Yes.
We ordered, do we have them? Are they stored somewhere?
I just picked them up on Friday.
That was a long time. Those were supposed to be July.
That was a huge lead time. Uh, we're, just picked them up on Friday, the uh.
Sorry, I would've asked if this turned yours. I thought this was Ed's.
It's fine. Cor, Corning has only had them about a week. They gave me a call about a week ago, said that they had them and then we arranged, uh, I, we went down for a. Uh, seminar on Friday and I picked them up from morning at their seminar.
Don't you need to make an appointment with YouTube?
Is yours electric? You have the reader on the outside of your house.
Paul's got, Paul's got two guys that do.
No, I think mine's inside.
Well, yeah, but that half their check comes out of our water supply.
Okay.
So. Um.
Do you know what yours is? I have no idea what mine's.
You're, really?
Well, well, your.
Your water.
Water meter?
Yeah.
No idea.
Really?
I'm pretty sure mine is tucked in the side of little wallboards in my house, but.
Mine is in the basement because I like things convenient. It's behind a really big freezer.
How do you keep track of it?
So, yeah.
When I have to shut the water off, I get on top of this, this uh.
I mean, I'm, I, I have a gas heater, but I don't know where the water meter is.
Yeah, and one for your power.
Yeah, that one I know where that is. We have two of them.
But I have another one in town that's inside a bottom kitchen cabinet.
Jesus, Louise, this house is bad.
Convenient.
I know.
Inside the floor.
But they've all been replaced.
I mean, I don't know about that one.
I had another one.
Pressed it, cause I was afraid my water bill would go up.
I had another one here, uh, that was in a, a spider infested crawl space. It was only about eighteen inches tall. You know, I mean, they really are, they really are in some terrible places.
And I mean, mine could be infected right next to the gas heater, but I only see one meter there, so I don't know which one is. Okay, so then the, sorry, I, I apologize for derailing you.
It's.
No, it's not, I mean, but it's.
Still a work in progress. It's, it's been a little slower than uh anybody likes.
I think we're just pointing out that.
Access since these houses has been really short.
But also it sounds like, it sounds like part of the problem is too, is the maintenance or of tracking how things are going, like. Is that part of our, how we're looking at?
It's just the follow-up on that. So uh, it, most of that's going through Maria and we're turning in the paperwork to, to wonder, they're, they're making the updates. Uh, and then it's uh another week later before I'm asking for, you know, um, uh, where are we, where are we sitting at? How many appointments do we have this week? Um, it's just follow-up. Uh, some of the other things going on, it's just follow-up. Right, we, and we do plan on replacing more meters.
Okay.
Um, but again, it's dependent on what we can get done and whether or not, what kind of emergency it is. We have the permits on hand and I even got some stuff that was on long lead time on Friday as well, some of them.
Well, that's good because we, we approved it. We approved paying for it and I'm like, where's, it's like October, where's our stuff?
We, no, we have it, we have it. It's, it's, it's a matter of getting it in now.
So our, and it gets confusing because it has to do with all. The, the ask, meters are dealt with by City Hall and Hall.
Yeah.
And the B.
All together. Um, but uh, the good question, we have about twenty five minutes before the executive session starts, so. Oh, what, what else do you have? Or, uh, sorry, Ed, what else do you have?
Out there.
Um.
Let's just go down here to the. Uh, for the wastewater plant, I'd like to do. Uh, our, the computer for the Narada controller is separate from the V M.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to replace that. I think they flooded me like forty thousand for the Narada controller computer. Uh. We've, we've come up with a really good way to uh control the digester. But some of the things are really difficult to do. Uh, because they would require like I don't in at nine or ten or eleven o'clock at night and like do a thing. And then come back home. So what I'd like to wind up doing is, is automating some of that. So that, for example, uh, oh, something you guys would notice would be. Does the digester stink if no one's around to smell it?
Gotcha.
Yes.
So. Well, if a tree falls in the forest.
Right.
Yes. I've been in there. Nobody else.
Well, but the point is, is to turn that thing back on.
Period. I see.
Turn that thing back on when nobody's around. Or. You know.
Nobody's trapped in there.
Turn that sucker back on at eleven or midnight when no one's around.
Mm-hmm.
Mister Paul, if the hill's gonna be mad at you then. Oh, there's always somebody within there. Uh, the, the Raptors literally had no complaints.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Nothing. Not a beat by them.
All the folks that were living on that C U G property?
Cause Eddie had actually recruited them.
I did, yeah.
So it was last year and they were complaining about the smell and I'm like, well, if you smell it at all, send me a text message. It'll give me clues on how to operate the digester.
Uh, a couple of text messages that I got last year, but nothing.
Wow, that's great, cool.
Even through, even through all that uh digester down, air stuff, nothing.
So is your three, is the three thousand thing you're asking for on the upgrades, is that part of our three point two million that we saw? Earlier in your, your expenditure for capital improvements?
That would be for water. The previous one, this is just for wastewater.
Okay.
Um, so, and then the other, underneath that one. Uh, the wastewater collection stuff, there'll be a number here for like the Virginia Street sewer line.
We don't have that yet, okay.
That's a carryover from what you see. Right, that's why that one was three million. Where, we always hope to, you know, come up with some kind of grant to. Help pay for these things.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, I'm quiet.
By all means, if ever question, you can even call me.
I just want to know where I'm gonna go, so when people say to me, right, 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 I can be like, no, actually we're doing this, cause a lot of the improvements that we do, you do not see that.
No, no, right.
But, and I'm like, but you can flush your toilets and get water, right? These are huge things.
Right, and that's, that's one of the most difficult things about what I'm doing down there, is literally nobody. Will say anything until there's something wrong.
Right.
They don't notice, they don't notice that all of these things that I've done in order to keep things right.
Right.
It's, you know, my water's off or the digester smells.
Yep.
Or.
That's why I asked.
And it's underground. You don't see it. And we're down at Clearfield County Town or Clearup Highway one oh three, so nobody sees us, nobody. Knows we exist until something's broken. And uh, but by all means, if anyone has a water wastewater question, you, you have my number. And what, what else do you have? That's at the end of the list.
All right. Well, uh, does council have any further questions for Ed? All right, Ed, thank you very much. Uh, very easy to understand. Uh, thank you for putting this one together.
You're welcome. I tried to make it.
All right, not, not, not in the leaves. Nope.
It was absolutely not.
Andy, your speed talker?
Andy, uh, I guess we will do what we can with the time we have here.
Trying to be quick, uh, just wanna mention that Ed did include um. In the packet there, uh, the job descriptions for the various jobs.
Yeah.
He, he wanted to give an overview of his department. He talked early on about uh all of the responsibilities, certifications, the. Requirements and then um at the end there are the job descriptions.
Right, and I wasn't entirely clear whether or not we had voted.
I think I said voted. After job descriptions or not. I, I think we're gonna need to update on a number of them, uh, Ed, so that's.
I, I updated all of mine. And they're here in the packet. Right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ed.
Andy, uh, I guess uh we'll uh go into it as far as time will allow.
Sounds good. Alrighty, well, I'll start with the proposed budget highlights for twenty twenty five and this will evolve. This is obviously the first. Round with council. It's uh time for departments to talk about their operations and their, their highlight their, their needs. So this affects all departments. Um, uh, like council, we consider possibly a four percent uh wage salary increase from twenty twenty five. Uh, inflation has certainly come down from what it was a few years ago, but everybody still uh feels a bit squeezed by. Uh, costs, uh, the housing costs and it still seems painful. Uh, the C P I, the Consumer Price Index for the metro area over the last year is one point nine percent. So that's actual uh the measurement, one of the measurements of cost of living. And um, so with a, with a four percent, uh, that would give, uh, cover some, cover the cost of living, but also a little bit of a. A bump beyond that. An important piece of this is what was being talked about here uh earlier in the conversation. Was not only uh doing a, a, across the board pay adjustment, but also look at the market salary and internal equity adjustments.
Yeah.
And that's what the mayor was talking about, is trying to get people where they should be in the range. We've come a long way, as I mentioned before, with council, with, with pay and. It's really appreciated by the staff. Uh, so that's something I'll be needing with each department in the upcoming weeks. Uh, as we work towards uh finalizing the budget is to not only. Uh, the, whatever across the board wage, uh, wage adjustment is uh agreed upon. But also uh what uh market and internal adjustments we may need to do based on length of service in a position. Um, and those sorts of things. So uh more to come on that, but I wanted to just uh mention that. Um, we've had a number of years where our health insurance premiums has been fairly modest, around five percent increases, which has been great. We're able to do that because we're a member of a pool with a lot of other uh smaller businesses throughout the state, so we have some leverage to. Get better rates. Um, this year, we're gonna see a pretty big increase, uh, more than double what it's been in recent years and about thirteen. Is what's projected for health insurance. Um. Dental pre- premiums will increase by four percent, so more modest. Um. Uh, no increase for vision and life insurance premiums this year. Uh, the city pays eighty percent of employee health dental premium and a hundred percent of the employee life insurance. Uh, city does not share the cost of vision insurance, so that's a fairly modest cost if an employee would like to, to get that. In administration, uh, the positions we have, the city administrator, assistant city administrator, which is currently posted, uh, we're in the recruitment phase that. Uh, closes on October fourteenth. We have gotten a number of applications, quite a few applications. Um. So we'll be screening those once it closes and then uh going through a, a process uh to get that position filled. Uh, community development planner, who's still in grades. Administrative services supervisor, this might not be the title we end up with. This is a position that Lorraine. Uh, brought, uh, discussed with council about how we might uh reorganize a little bit with our administrative support staff and. Uh, admin and uh police. So uh more to come on.
We didn't, like, we didn't, we didn't come to any kind of.
No, this is proposed for next year, proposed. So more, more to come on that. Yeah, we're, we're actually. Mayor, I, I wanted to mention, um, in two weeks, I'm proposing that we come back uh with another off week work session.
Okay.
Uh, to talk about, um, you know, budget again and, and a few other matters related to personnel. And then I think we'll be in pretty good shape with a budget uh well along, so.
Okay.
So I'll mention that now. Everybody's planning their calendars. Uh, we have a pretty full work session next week with our regular meeting, so. Already on other, other items. Uh, and our other positions, we have deputy city clerk Wonder Martel, uh, deputy treasurer, court clerk Kelsey Smith. And the administrative clerk position, which is currently vacant. Uh, I've had discussions with both Public Works and Water Facilities, Paul and Ed. About, about this position. Uh, before my time, that position was part-time and was mainly um. Focused on public works and water wastewater, uh, which is now we call water facilities. So uh, there is now at the new public work facility, a second office there. I'd like to propose that we consider moving that position. Assuming we get the uh, the supervisor position or something like that, we're gonna have more discussion about that before it's finalized. But moving that, the administrative clerk position, which primarily deals with. Public works, provides administrative support to public works and water wastewater, moving that position down to um. The new public work building.
Water billing?
It would have a role in water billing. You know, as, as Lorraine discussed, uh, we'd like to. Um, divide up some of the positions, so you might have like one person does the intake, the next person checks that work and actually.
I would really like some more discussion.
Building. Okay, so we can, we can talk, we will, uh, in the meet, uh, meeting in two weeks, we'll talk about that more.
Would Wonder move down there?
No, Wonder would stay here. Wonder, Wonder and Kelsey would stay here.
Oh.
But uh, this would be contingent on us having a third new position, as Lorraine talked about, some form of position. Here, but moving the administrative clerk position that's vacant here, moving that down to.
And this is based on just taking all of Lorraine's recommendations, correct? Because I actually would like to talk about her recommendations.
Sure.
Because I don't agree with all of them.
Okay, and, and, and this is actually a little bit of a variation from some of the things that she talked about too, so. But yes, we'll have more conversation about that is what I'm, what I'm. Um, and then council has approved on a contract basis, the business promotion and vitality director. Uh, a part-time basis for the rest of this year and then uh, uh, it's proposed that that position continue into the new year.
Right.
And that would be out of the, we have a separate budget, as you know, for community promotion and so. Say, we'll be coming in next week to talk more about the community promotion uh budget requests for next year, so that you'll, that will be on the agenda next week. Um. Okay, and this, in uh essence, in the consideration of time here, I'm gonna jump down to just a few more highlights here.
Ask one question with.
Sure.
With the building inspection, we did approve, I think in March or April, a request or proposal to bring building in-house. Are we still pursuing that? Because.
Uh, it's a bit, I'm glad you asked that, because that's a great segue that next week, we are gonna have a presentation from uh the building official for Clear Creek County. And one of the options we were looking at is whether or not all the municipalities should get, uh, we should have a county-wide building department. And uh, so the, we've had some discussions at staff level with Clear Creek County, Georgetown. Uh, Empire already uses Clear Creek County for their inspections, so we wanna see if that uh makes sense for, for us here.
And, and at worst though, as far as a budget planning, we're not looking to increase.
No.
No, we spend like a hundred thousand a year, I think.
Yeah.
And we get two days and then they also have a separate contract with Georgetown.
Well, well, and, and that's what we were looking at, uh, maybe uh better customer service and uh, but, but I, I, again, in the interest of time. Uh, for budget purposes, I'm saying that this would essentially be uh out of the budget, either way we go, right? We're, we're not going to increase it. We're, we're not going to increase it.
Okay.
And so we are committed to either uh, issuing a new RFP. Or going maybe with the county, but we wanted to look at this county option because Georgetown was interested in doing it. And this would give us uh, uh, inspections five days a week, which is one of our goals.
Yeah, they probably put in their schedule with their next day if you request something.
Yeah, or, or close. And I, I think all of us know about the uh, customer service issues.
Two days a week, man.
I'm safe, Bill.
Yeah.
Well, we have a big project going on right now that they could use more than two days a week.
Yeah, sure.
Right.
Yeah.
So the building official with uh, Clear Creek County, we come into council next week, uh, he will be presenting at the mayor's commissioners meeting tomorrow, the breakfast meeting. To the, to all, to the whole county, uh, the other municipalities and.
Andy, is that Paul? Did he take that horse note from Dev? Wouldn't it get?
I can't get this name, I'm sorry.
What, hit him, Paul? Scott?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have the name on the tip of my tongue.
Big beard, big braided beard?
Uh, for, for the building official for, for Clear Creek County? No, that, that would, that's not the gentleman I saw.
Oh, okay. Oh, he's the new guy, Agent Bryant.
He's the new guy, yeah.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, he's presenting tomorrow with the.
Mayors and.
And he's a good guy.
Um, I would, I would recommend that we start design for the water and sewer main replacement in Virginia Street. West of uh, Virginia Canyon Road, uh, that was something uh, we, till we got sticker shock on the cost of projects. With Virginia Canyon and Virginia Street East. Uh, we, we, we held off on that, but it, again, it's always good to have some projects in design. For when we go pursuing uh, grant funding, and we're trying to, you know, plan to fund these project, or trying to find a way to get these projects accomplished. So I'd recommend that we uh, start the design next year for uh, Virginia Street from um, the one thousand block to the twenty-two hundred block. So that is one of my recommendations for next year. Sales tax improvement fund, um, and Paul or Ed can, or can chime in here if they have anything to add on these, but uh, the main projects next year. Are the redevelopment of the Shelley Quinn Ballfields. Uh, this is the project to redevelop the east uh, baseball field.
Yeah.
Into a skate park, tennis pickleball court, playground, a couple of small practice fields there. Uh, we, we did receive a one point two five million dollar uh, grant from CPW. It's actually uh, federal money, but it comes through CPW. Uh, we're matching that and we'd like to get that project uh, started next year. Uh, phase four trails construction at Virginia Canyon Mountain Park, we submitted the uh, application to CPW for a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for that. So if we proceed, if we move along in that application process, uh, we'll have a presentation likely in. In January to see if we can uh, get, secure that funding to help that next phase of trail construction. Uh, big one is the design and construction of our new police station across the street in the um. Old bank building. Uh, we have secured one million dollars uh, in funding from DOLA. And we're mat, matching that uh, to get that project underway. We're about to issue a request for qualifications. To bring on a contractor to work with our design team. To help us um, finish the design of that project and then construct it, get the work done. So. So that's a project that will be underway next year in construction. Um, Courtney Riley Cooper Play Park Improvements, we've been in the design phase for that. We're gonna have to see where the funding. Um, lands with that. It's, it's an expensive project. Uh, I think we're gonna need to find some grant funding to really make that one happen. Uh, to the extent we like it to be completed. So that's uh, more to come. I'd like to uh, have us consider uh, resetting the pavers at Idaho Mall. I don't know exactly what the cost will be on that. But those pavers, I think if they're reset, we get some more life out of the, out of the mall. The, the pavers are. Are settled a little bit. They, they hold water, it doesn't drain properly. Uh, the curving's pretty good. The boundaries of the mall are pretty good, that's two blocks, but it looks like the pavers need, in my view, need to be reset, so. I think that, that would be a relatively, relatively low-cost project that would give us more life for that uh, for that mall.
Would you consider uh, stamped color concrete?
And that may be a, a better way to go, Paul. I, we haven't really talked about it much, but uh, I think we should do something with the mall there. Um, affordable senior housing project, uh, this is up by the uh. Cemetery and we've done some uh, conceptual design, working with a consultant on the feasibility of getting that. Constructed, and I think I'd like to keep advancing that uh, the design phase, uh, once we take full ownership of that property in early January. Uh, city hall remodeling, I'd like to get uh, some of the remodeling done here. We might have to phase it, but I'd definitely like to get this uh, um. Council chambers uh, done as we've talked about, um, and maybe the front office as well. Uh, powder house restoration, uh, that's um, um. Out for bid right now to get that restoration work done. That's a fairly small project. It involves pointing up the stone. And it also would be uh, put a new roof on, on that. So it's basically just trying to, to um, restore and, and tighten up that building. And then the train shelter, you recently heard about that. We, uh, that could have a big uh, price tag on it. We're looking at maybe some options to build it. Or uh, for less cost at a, at a maybe slightly different, different materials, um, but still have it be a good, you know, a good-looking project, so. More to come on that. And then the big one is the parking, uh, is a mobility hub design and engineering. Uh, we're still waiting to get the final uh, contract from the, from the feds to, to be able to. Get a consultant on board to get that uh, in design and engineering. So um. Think, what else do I have here? Uh, then you've got some of the detail there, which we don't have time to get into. You'll be seeing this again, uh, scroll down, see if there's anything else I wanted to mention before we close. Think that might be, yeah.
Yeah, you have the building promotion, we have a business promotion and vitality director in your community promotion budget.
All right, we.
All right, I think that's it, Eric.
We still have a few minutes, uh, questions for Randy?
Sounds like you have more to tell us, so I'm not gonna get it.
Yeah, well, yeah, but uh, I guess we're just about out of time, but yeah, we'll have more discussion. Of course, of course. This is just the first round here, so.
Randy, you tossed me the.
Yep.
We're just gonna stay here for.
Yes, yep. Well, I just need to end this meeting and then give guys.